Sign. Uh, we are looking at the site facing south. This is uh facing west. This is also facing west but along Kingswood Lane. This is facing northeast across Kingswood Lane. This is facing east along Kingswood Lane. This is facing south. This is facing northwest. We are looking at the site. This is facing east. You can see some of the single family houses. This is again facing south. This is facing northwest. This is facing southwest. And this is facing northeast. Basically, this is the back of the site. This is facing northwest along Southern Property Line. And this is facing southeast across Southern Property Line. You can see some of the single family houses are here as well. This is southwest. This is northwest. This is also, we are like, we are facing northwest here. Northwest. And this is southeast. You can see the Kingswood uh Lane here. Next, we'll listen to the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner here? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Larry Johnston. I'm serving as a project manager for Victory Christian Academy through the process of converting this property into a private Christian school. Um, and we are uh, we're pleased to submit to you uh the story of our presentation. Victory Christian Academy was established in nineteen seventy-five. We have served families in South City and South St. Louis County for forty-eight years. The academy has provided an excellent education and a positive influence in the surrounding committees, communities, excuse me. Um, we're here to request a conditional use permit. Victory Christian, uh Victory purchased the property of eight oh two Kenswood Lane from Missouri Baptist Association uh on December twenty twenty-one with full intent of establishing a private school. We, the property is currently zoned for schools and churches. The property appeared to be similar in size to that of other schools. And to our fault, we were not aware of the requirements for minimum land area for schools. Uh, therefore, we are requesting approval for a conditional use permit for a small private school ranging from kindergarten through twelfth grade. This uh is a site plan, a topical survey, um which I apologize for how difficult it is to see. I hope it's better on your screens. It's the only one that we could obtain that showed the topocofal lands. But I'm glad for the pictures that were shown uh earlier because it shows that, that the plot is basically a level plot, particularly that west of the, of the school building and with a slight slope to that east of the school building. We have a large uh parking lot and I'll address that more. This is a better uh depiction of our plot. Uh, you can see uh at the top, and that was just presented by the, by the administrator. But uh our land is shown by that red dot between uh Lee May Ferry uh road and Telegraph Road just south of uh I two fifty-five. Uh, as you can see, uh Kenswood Lane is really like an access road along the south side of I two fifty-five. And our school entry is off of Kenswood Lane. And you can enter our parking lot. You can see our two school, our school building there and our chapel building that's connected to it and our, and our adequate parking spaces. I'll address that in detail in a moment. Uh, there is a, a little bit of screening of wooded area on the west and a little bit on the south there and a couple of trees shown by circles. The property plans, all planned improvements are interior to the existing educational building. We have no new outside construction required, no new landscaping or drainage changes. The educational building will be brought up to current code, including ADA access. No new parking is required, and I'll address that further. The building will consist of thirteen classrooms, two office rooms, and two restrooms per floor. This shows a layout of the rooms on the three floors of our educational building. The classrooms are shown in blue with the, the uh the floor on the right being our lower floor, our lower level, starting with kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade. On the next level up is our offices shown in green, uh two offices there. And then we have third grade, uh excuse me, hard to see here, fourth grade, fifth grade. And then we start with uh our middle school classes and two classes there and one on the upper level. And then we have four uh high school class levels on the upper level. Parking requirements. The requirements are that one parking space for each classroom and office. Uh, we currently have a hundred and twenty students. We project to grow in the school up to two hundred students, uh which would be an average of fifteen students per classroom. Uh, based on that, the uh, the, the thirteen classrooms plus the two office rooms would require fifteen spaces. And then there is a requirement for one space for every four students over sixteen years of age. Uh, I've, I believe that that would represent the top three classes in the high school only. Uh, that would be in that age category. And so based on our three uh classrooms of an average of fifteen students per classroom, uh that would result in twelve spaces required for uh, for the students. So adding that with the fifteen, we have twenty-seven spaces would be required. However, we wanted to also show that if we went to maximum capacity of the building, the architect says the capacity of the building is approximately three hundred and fifteen individuals, including students and teachers. And if we did that and we assumed uh two teachers or a teacher and teacher aide per class, and then we, he even went to the trouble to calculate if four classrooms of students over sixteen, which is really kind of impossible in a high school, four classrooms of students over sixteen for a total of fifty-seven parking places required. We have eighty-nine parking places currently. And that says that in, even with the most conservative approach, we still exceed the parking requirements by thirty-two spaces. Current property investments. We purchased the property at a, a considerable expense. Uh, we currently are installing a fire suppression sprinkler system and fire warning system at a cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are planning, as soon as our permit is approved, to install six new restrooms, two per floor, all new HVAC systems on all floors, new electrical upgrade on all floors, and two new lifts for ADA access. We believe the property is well-suited for our small private school. There, we, and therefore, we're requesting a conditional use permit for Victory Christian Academy. We have no plans for additional buildings, but the space, the level space to the west of our building, we believe would even be adequate for building a gym or, and perhaps a ball diamond. We don't plan to do that now. We don't foresee that. But we believe the space is there if we need it to in the future. Okay? That's all I have. Questions? Anyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, uh. The uh. How, during the day, teaching, they just do it five days a week or?
We teach five days a week. I believe the school uh time, it's, it's a normal school day. Um, and, and being the project manager for the improvement, I, I don't know the hours. Eric, do you know the hours? Thank you. I, I should have introduced Eric as a member of our school board. Okay?
Direct access from the lower level. I couldn't tell on the direct access side from the floor.
There, there's, no. There is two outside accesses, but they are not directly to a floor. Therefore, we are putting in two lifts, one that, that has access from the outside, goes down to the basement and up to the second floor. The second lift is at the other end of the building, but goes from the second floor up to the third floor. So those two lifts, and they're commercial-grade uh lifts for ADA compliance, and they allow us to have access to the entire building. We have, we have more than adequate fire exits. We, that's all been looked at. And the far, the far department is, you know, reviewing that too. And I, I won't say has approved it yet because our permit's not approved. But we believe they will approve it. We have more than adequate stairways on both ends of the building for exits.
Dropped off except those high school might drive themselves.
Yeah, yes, sir. I believe that's correct.
Thank you very much.
You. Anything else? Anyone?
I have a, Mr. Johnston, if you would, please complete one of the yellow speaker cards before. And if you don't hand it to me, um you can just leave it in the basket out, outside. And, and Eric, if you would also, since you spoke, if you would also complete a yellow speaker card and leave it in the white basket for us.
Okay, certainly will.
Lou, could you bring your, your mic down to your?
How many members of staff plan on having, like teachers, custodians?
Well, we will, we will have certainly at least one for every grade. We'll have some additional teachers that, that do specialty classes, do that, and we have that now. Um, we will have custodian care, okay? Uh, and all of that, uh if you're thinking about the parking, that is still well within our parking requirements. Eight to twelve. Yes. Anyone?
No, I, I didn't notice. Do you have a nurse's station?
Oh, we do not currently. Eric, could you help me with that? Uh, I think that's something that we might want to include. Uh, you know, we have the chapel building, which I showed in the, in there that I didn't address and get into the details of. But there, there's possibility of room in that chapel building for such things as a nurse's aide and janitorial uh capability.
I was just wondering like if a student got sick and couldn't go home immediately.
Yeah, we have the room there to take care of that. Yeah. Well, we are temporarily in Canaan Baptist Church uh in leased or loaned facilities. And so we're, obviously, we're not in this building yet. This is, this is our desire to buy this building and change.
Do you have any kind of nurse?
We don't have a nurse station right now.
Okay. Could I mean, kids get, not only get sick, they have other medical needs?
Yeah.
Such as prescriptions?
Yeah. I, I think we have some nurses on staff. Eric, can you come down and apologize?
Currently, if, if a child is ill.
State your name for the record.
My name is Eric Muren. I'm a board member of Victory Christian Academy. Uh, currently, if we have an ill student, he would go to an administrative office and would wait there until a parent is able, or our guardian is able to come and, and retrieve the child.
What about dispensing medication?
Um, as far as dispensing medication, I, I can't answer that question. I do not have an answer for you.
Anyone else? Thank you. At this time, is anyone representing a group who'd like to speak in favor? Any individual who'd like to speak in favor? Being none, anyone representing a group who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Being no one, anyone in opposition or with concern? Being no one, we do not need rebuttal then. So at this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition, in favor. Let the record show four. Those opposed are with concern. Let the record show no one. That concludes this hearing. Appreciate you coming. Thank you. Next item is PC oh nine dash twenty-three, Michael Brown.
Good evening. PC oh nine dash twenty-three, Michael Brown, is a request for an amended C eight for a track size of zero point six one acres located on the south side of Concord Village Avenue, approximately two hundred forty feet northeast of Baptist Church Road. As you can see, this site is located in South County and the aerial to your right will show the site outlined in red. Currently, the site is surrounded by um many auto-oriented um and other retail facilities with some multifamily and single family um on the outskirts. Again, here is an aerial view with that site outlined in red. This is looking southeast onto the property, looking at the public hearing sign. This is looking north. This is looking northwest across Concord Village Avenue. This is looking southwest. This is looking south. This is looking southeast directly across towards the back of the site. This is looking northeast, east on the property. This is looking southeast into the uh, behind the property, into the neighboring property. This is looking southwest. This is looking west um to show the drainage. And we'll allow the petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm the commission man is Clay Vance. I'm an engineer with Vance Engineering. Um, we're here this evening to uh request the amended C eight. This is a um, uh. It's a, it's a request for uh basically the same thing that it was approved for a few years ago. And for whatever reason, actually, we, we're not actually sure why we didn't get it finished, but we didn't get it through to the finish line. Um, and uh we kind of assumed that we did, but it could have been my fault. I, I'm not positive. But at any rate, this is the site of, of the Spanky's Frozen Custard. And the initial, uh, the initial um tent was to reuse the Spanky's building as a um tail shop or, or prep shop for the um pre-owned. And then I think in the time that we were going through that process, they acquired another property there in the area, which if you look at this site here, Lita owns all that, that property outlined in red. And um they decided they did not need the Spanky's building to, didn't need to rehab it. And so we amended our plan and resubmitted it. And we're just about through the process. And that's where it ended up getting bogged down or stopping. But um they, they did end up demolishing the building. And what you see here is, is the current state of it. Um, their intent is to use that for parking for employees and inventory. That's it. Um, the um site plan that we submitted um and had been through PCL with review with it is, as you see it here. Um, really, the only, the only item that we took off is I had inadvertently left a trash dumpster on there. And we took that off because they don't, don't generate any trash. Um, with the landscape plan in the front. So the difference that you would see in the site from from here to what we're proposing would be the um road improvements and the landscaping across the front. Otherwise, it's a, it's a parking lot to be used for employees and inventory parking. Steve's here with me, Steve Brown, general manager. If you have any questions that we can.
Questions? Anyone?
Clarification, but that parking lot is owned and will be used by current dealership there?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Lighting out there currently? This is Steve Brown, the general manager. Um, there is one uh lot light, yes, LED.
Want to fence it?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, is anyone here representing a group who'd like to speak in favor? Any individual who'd like to speak in favor? Being none, any, in, one representing a group who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern, or an individual with opposition or with concern? Being no one, um, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Let the record show two opposed or with concern. Let the record show none. That concludes this hearing. Thank you. Next item is PC ten dash twenty-three. D San Hugh, I believe it is.
This is PC ten dash twenty-three. This Handu is requesting C eight com, planned commercial district for packaging liquor store plus all uh C two permitted users for a one point two uh one point two six acres track located on southwest quadrant of New Hall's Ferry Road and Seven Hills Drive. The site, the site is located in South County, uh North County and outlined in red in the area. In the land use map, you can see there are different types of commercial uh, uh land uses, uh car dealerships, restaurants, medical offices, uh storage facilities. Additionally, there are single-family housing, multifamily housing, and may, some apartment complexes as well. From this area, you can see the different lot sizes and different densities. And this is the public hearing and we are looking at the site facing southwest. We are facing northwest along New Paul, New Falls Ferry Road. This is facing uh northeast across New Falls Ferry Road. This is facing southeast along Falls Ferry Road. This is facing southeast along Falls Ferry Road. This is facing southwest along Southern Property Line. This is facing northwest through this, we are looking through the side. This is facing southwest and this is, uh, facing northwest. And we'll listen to the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Elmer Crusel. I'm a civil engineer, uh, with offices, uh, in, at 35 Thorough Court in O'Fallon, Missouri. And the owner has asked me to assist him in, uh, obtaining the, uh, approval of these, uh, use of the, of the property that he, he's intending. Uh, the property is located. Okay, uh, property on this slide is outlined in yellow. Uh, it's located at 11501 New Hall's Ferry Road. And it's, uh, approximately one, one half mile northwest of Highway 270 on, uh, New Hall's Ferry. The property is completely surrounded by, by other commercial uses with a, uh, uh, auto dealership on the, uh, opposite side of New Hall's Ferry. And another auto dealership to the, uh, northwest of the property. Uh, mini storage warehouses, uh, behind the property to the west. Add a chiropractor's office, uh, to the south of the, uh, of the property. This is a site plan that we prepared, uh, that locates the exist, existing buildings, existing parking lot and other features that are on the site. There is a small creek that's tributary, uh, to Hall's Ferry Creek that runs adjacent to the rear property line. Uh, the, uh, Zone A flood hazard area crosses, uh, the hatched area in, on the southernmost part of the property. And again, it crosses the property line about two-thirds of the way, uh, up, uh, to the north. Uh, it's a Zone A flood hazard area, which is defined by FEMA as a, uh, potential flooding in a 100-year storm, but, uh, because it's a small creek, they did, didn't determine the, uh, high water. Uh, both areas where it crosses the property, uh, the building sits approximately 17 feet above the, uh, the elevation of the, uh, Zone A flood hazard area. So there should be no, no issues with the flooding. These are photographs of, of Hall's Ferry. Uh, on the left is, uh, looking to the northwest and on the right is looking to the southeast. Uh, both of them show that, uh, there's very good visibility, uh, so he has excellent access to the property. Uh, this slide shows the existing building that was previously, uh, used as a commercial laundry, uh, facility. Uh, as I understand it, uh, the original's, uh, C8 ordinance allowed only the, uh, commercial laundry. Uh, and, uh, a, someone bought it after their laundry closed, uh, to convert it to a, uh, uh, marijuana dispensary. Uh, and, uh, the ordinance was changed to allow the marijuana dispensary. And we definitely did not want that, uh, uh, we're looking to put a convenience store, uh, with, uh, liquor sales, uh, on the site, uh, using the existing building, existing parking lot and so on. Uh, the store, which will be Quick Stop Wine and Spirits, will be open, uh, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through, uh, Thursday. Uh, stay open in one extra hour on Friday and Saturday to 11:00 PM and close, uh, two hours earlier than on Sunday at 8:00 PM. Uh, the owner is anticipating seven employees on, in the store at any one time, uh, with a total of 10 employees, uh, to allow for them to have their time off. Uh, there's an existing freestanding sign, uh, which is off to the right of, uh, this slide. And, uh, there, there's, it, uh, the freestanding sign, uh, uh, says, uh, Quick Stop Wine and Spirits and the sign on the building, which is just, uh, a Quick Stop, Quick Stop Liquor. That's the only signage that's planned. The o, owner, uh, is anticipating, uh, it will be a convenience store with liquor sales, but, uh, lottery, uh, sales, uh, uh, all of the normal things that you would find in a convenience store with, uh, uh, food and, uh, soda and so on. Uh, on this, the exterior, as you can see, there's no, uh, uh, striping on the parking lot. The, that's the only thing that he really needs to do is to re-stripe the parking lot and some cleanup work on it because it sat idle for many years. So, uh, there's obviously some work that needs to be done with that. Uh, the, uh, striping for the building will be, uh, uh, provide, uh, two accessible parking spaces. Uh, and, uh, uh, the ordinance calls for, uh, one, or four parking spaces per thousand square feet. There's, uh, more than enough room, uh, for all of the required parking. And, uh, uh, there's also areas to the north that, uh, he can expand the parking lot in the future if he expands the building. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have and.
Will there be security when the, during hours of operation? Will there be security on site?
The hours of operation, uh?
During the hours of operation.
I'm sorry?
Will there be a security officer during the hours of operation?
I'm not sure.
Well, I, I might address it. My name is Jake Kansler. I'm attorney for the petitioners. Um, I don't believe, this store used to operate just down the street. And then they lost their lease. They purchased this building. And then they went ahead and they got, they even have their liquor license. They have everything only to find out that, you know, the zoning was an issue and then it had to go back. Um, my guess is that the answer is no to begin with, but as someone who represents dozens and dozens of, of convenience stores, gas stations and others, um, that's a matter of kind of what goes on in the neighborhood. And if it ever becomes a problem, um, I'm a big fan of security to put those problems, uh, to an end. It will have all the usual, um, video surveillance that is always shared. Uh, they never had any problem with, you know, giving that over to the, um, you know, to law enforcement at any time or giving them access. I don't believe it would be probably necessary to begin with, but always open for consideration.
Excuse me, sir, are you aware that within a mile in both directions on New Hall's Ferry, that there are establishments that also sell packaged liquor?
Uh, I am aware of that, uh, Mr. Cunningham. Um, I'm also aware that that is a liquor licensing issue that has already been determined. They have a liquor license for this location. So this is, but for the zoning issue, um, they would be in operation. They didn't realize that the zoning had changed on this. So, um, it is not uncommon for gas stations, convenience stores, grocery stores, liquor stores to occupy, um, this. This will be a convenience store as, that sells beer, wine and liquor.
Would you be opposed to opening your convenience store, uh, without the sale of alcohol?
I mean, certainly they would consider it, but I don't think, given that they have a liquor license. The issue of proximity of liquor licenses, uh, stores from one to another is governed by county ordinance. And that's already been addressed by the, them in granting the liquor license here. So that isn't really an issue of, of zoning so much as the liquor license. They want to put this to good use. Okay? So are they opposed, you know? Um, but it would be kind of saying, do you want to take a, a rightful revenue source that they're entitled to pursue and not, um, offer that? Hard to swallow.
Mr. Hilsinger, if I may, um, I know there's a lot of timelines going on when someone gets a liquor license, but, um, you know, the Department of Revenue issues liquor licenses. The zoning ordinance, um, it's not about the license that's issued by, uh, the licensing division. The zoning ordinance defines a packaged liquor facility as any, uh, retail operation where more than 66.6% of, of the revenue comes from the sale of liquor. So a facility could be given a license to sell original package, uh, liquor in the original package, but you're only a packaged liquor store if your sales, uh, exceed two-thirds from, from liquor. So that's where some of the, you know, there are other facilities within a thousand feet even, um, that do have original packaged liquor licenses, but they are not packaged liquor stores unless more than two-thirds of the sales come from the, uh, from the sale of liquor.
And it's hard to tell at this time, this new facility, they plan to increase the sales of, you know, food items, grocery items, soda, chips, all of those items.
You mentioned that there is some cleanup work because the site sat abandoned for some time. Can you elaborate at all on that? I'm thinking about potholes in the, in the.
There are no potholes, uh, on the parking lot that I'm aware of. Uh, uh, the cleanup will be primarily, uh, in the rear of the building. Uh, there's, uh, some fresh that I saw there and, uh, the, uh, uh, dumpster is, uh, the dumpster enclosure is a chain link fence with slats in it. So, several of those slats have been, uh, uh, broken and will need to be cleaned up and, uh, possibly new gates on the, on the, uh, fresh closure. That, that sort of thing.
The parking lot just needs, uh, parking spaces, painted?
Uh, yeah, it will need to be painted before they open. And, uh, but, uh, the entire parking lot appears to have been, uh, not, not too distant. So it's, uh, it's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I'm still confused on the, uh, package liquor license because the proposed use is for a package liquor store, correct?
I, I think that's, again, I saw that when it came up, uh, Mr. Elliott, I'm sorry. And, um, I don't, when it was originally submitted, I guess that's what they submitted it as because they were a liquor store. This facility, they intend to expand into a convenience store with liquor sales.
So, so if I may, again, for a little background, um, as the petitioner stated, in 2020, this site came before the commission, uh, the petitioner wanted to do a medical, this was at the time a medical marijuana facility, um, after public hearing. But before we presented, uh, the staff recommendation, they realized they were not getting a license from the state. So the commission's recommendation was all C2 permitted uses and that's what the council granted. Uh, as written, that would permit a packaged liquor store. Uh, and as the commission may recall, a couple of months ago, there was a request for an extension of time at this site for them to submit a site plan because 18 months had lapsed since the 2020 zoning petition. Every C8 has that timeline that they have to get a site plan approved within 18 months. Since that didn't happen for the 2020 petition, the petitioner, I'm not sure if it's the same operator, but an operator at that time came before the commission requesting that extension of time to submit a site plan, which the commission denied. So that's why they're back here tonight is because they can't get a site plan approved for any use. But the application we received did say that it was, the proposed use was a packaged liquor store.
More or less.
Again, I, I understand what you're saying. That's what it said on there, but I'm here tonight to tell you, and they're here, that that, the plan is for a convenience store with liquor sales. More lighting?
There is no more lighting planned. Uh, there are two lights on the, uh, roof of the building and I believe, uh, three freestanding, uh, uh, lights. Uh, one. So there, there is enough light, uh, there, so no more is needed.
Will there be any additional landscaping that's being proposed with this?
Uh, we haven't, uh, proposed any additional landscaping, but, uh, I'm sure that the owners would have no problem with adding some. Uh, there is a, uh, on, to the north of the existing building, there is a wooded area. Uh, but, uh, there's very little landscaping other than a few bushes, uh, right there at the, uh, front of the building. Uh, but there's an island between New Hall's Ferry and the parking lot where, uh, some additional landscaping could be easily put in.
See no one. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group who'd like to speak in favor? Any individual like to speak in favor? Being none? May I have somebody? Any individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern or a group? Come on down.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, uh, do we need a liquor store in North County?
Could you state your name for the record?
Yeah. Sorry, uh, Dharmi Sharma. So first off, do we need a liquor store in the North County? There is a significant amount of the liquor store within a one-mile radius. In fact, you see there is, across the street, there is a crazy deal liquor store. It's a packaged liquor, similar operation, similar looks, everything in same thing. In order to look in the convenience store, there is a QT gas station across the street. If you walk within about, I would say, half a mile or less than a mile, that is another liquor store. If you go to north side, within a half a mile, that is another liquor store. So in, in study, I have it done, there is more than six liquor store within a half a miles radius. If you go one more mile, there is about seven to eight liquor store in North County. And if you take a five-mile radius within a north, north county and everywhere, so there is almost more than 20 packaged liquor store in that area. So do we need another liquor store in that area? In order to say, I would say the convenience store, yes, we, we really need a grocery store because Save-A-Lot just closed across the street, Shop &amp; Save just closed last year. So actually, we need a grocery store instead of just a packaged liquor store. Of course, there is a competition and, uh, other business owner gonna lose the business at the same time. So this is something that needs to be considered, uh, because I'm, uh, we have done the study and everything, it's on the paper. And as of my point of view, there is a, enough liquor store in, uh, in that particular street. Uh, and of course, in the North County. uh, and of course in the North County and of course on that exit. So I'm opposed to this liquor license to be granted.
So are you a homeowner or a business owner?
Business owner.
Nearby?
Nearby, the, it's just within a half mile area.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern? Come on down.
Hello, Councilmember, good evening. My name is Jay Shamin. I am also a retailer down the street. I also own a liquor store in that area and there is quite a few competition nearby. So I'm here to oppose this petition.
What reasons?
Oh, I have a liquor store.
Okay.
So it's just-
It's a petition.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, anyone? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, my name is Deborah Stanley. I live in North County and I won't repeat what was just said up here from the first gentleman that spoke because I share those same sentiments. I don't think that we need another liquor store in our area. We need businesses that we're losing in our area. Eaterys, um, grocery stores, um, clothing stores, things like that, that's gonna help build the area and not take away. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate the comment.
May I have your card? Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vinny Bagad. I'm the business owner nearby, uh, that liquor store. Uh, uh, I'm opposing that liquor license. We don't want to add no more liquor store in that area. We have more than enough liquor store. That's, uh, I, I should, um, committee should, shouldn't consider that's another liquor store in that area.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you, appreciate the comments. Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, if the petitioners want to come back?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and others. The three individuals, uh, male individuals that spoke to you are all partners in liquor store chain. They own three liquor stores, one right across the street. Okay, so I suppose they are opposed to a liquor store. I think it's important to remember also that this store was right up there. It was a few blocks down the street. They lost their lease, okay? So this isn't really new to that area. Um, they went ahead and purchased the new building because they lost their lease and they've been closed for a while because of the leasing issue. So again, this isn't another new, this has always been there, they're just trying to move down the street. Again, I heard, I were opposed to the liquor license, we're opposed to the liquor store. This isn't a liquor licensing hearing, but this is a convenience store that will sell food and other things in addition to, um, selling alcoholic beverages. And if, it isn't so much, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision or job to, to talk about competition, um, there are lots of different businesses that compete with one another. Every time a, uh, a fast food restaurant goes in at one corner, then the other three corners fill up because that's what happens with businesses. Um, that's why I think in this particular case, given what it was previously and what they'd like to do, um, I would ask that you, you approve that.
Is your client opposed to adding some type of fresh produce or offering some type of services like that?
No, again, I think what they want to do is they want to use this business, they want to get back in business. They, they have purchased this building and all of a sudden now they're making the lease or the, you know, the mortgage payments and they want to get open and anything they can do, um, to serve the community and to make money, um, is what any business person would want to do. And offering those, um, types of services, again, I think if that was a condition that this, uh, the Planning and Zoning came up with and it was approved by the county council, um, I think they'd be very open to that.
Do you happen to have any information pertaining to, uh, what percentage of their sales over the last several years have been liquor sales versus the other types of, other types of products?
I, I don't have that and again, I think it's a little different with this building, this newer building and the size of it and the expansion. It's going to be a different operation than they, um, they had previously. So I don't, I think we would be at apples and oranges at that point. I wish I did.
Tell me previously, this was a packaged liquor store that they-
Yes, sir.
So they never were in the convenience store business?
It was, uh, it was basically a packaged liquor store. It was a smaller operation. You have some ancillary items, but not like what they are planning now. That's correct.
So the majority of your sales was packaged liquor?
When, when it was a liquor store, but it's not going to be a liquor store now.
What was the size of the door?
Uh, I do not know, Mr. Hilsinger. I can certainly turn around and ask.
Smaller, bigger?
Serious, obviously if you got a bigger store, you can do a whole lot more with it.
Yeah. And they will fill out cards for the council.
Good evening, my name is Darmbir Sandhu and I'm the owner of, uh, that, uh, package store. And we purchased that actually earlier, a year before at the location. We were, actually, we was moving from A to B location, that's why we bought that building. And, uh, we mostly have sales for everything. We have a convenience inside, we have, uh, all kind of sodas, beers and everything. So we was doing actually everything up there.
That's, uh, and, uh, I could, the size of this building compared with the old building, is it bigger?
It's really bigger. It's like forty, forty-two, forty-four hundred square feet.
What was the size of the old building?
Uh, that was like twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred.
Okay, so you gotta fill it up.
And we paying a mortgage since we are closed for almost a year and we are paying taxes around forty, fourteen thousand dollar a year. So it's all going from the pocket until we open this building back.
Appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Here, if, if we would, if this would pass under the auspices of a packaged liquor store, which is what you applied for, then what happens if the produce stuff goes out the window and it becomes just a gigantic liquor sales?
Well, um, first of all, I think, I, I, I stand corrected. I think, uh, Mr. Sandhu said it was always, uh, convenience, but now, um, it's going to be more of that. Um, I, I don't know what your, your remedies would be, Mr. Elliott. I, I think there are, you know, conditions that can be, uh, imposed on this. And, um, I, I don't think they want to, what they want to do is if they're just competing with liquor stores, then they're probably not gonna do a very bang up job because as they said, there are others there. If they're going to be serving other items, that's where they're going to give-
Okay, but I'm leaving the competition factor out of it.
No, no, I'm saying-
Forget the competition.
Right, I'm saying that I think they want to go beyond liquor. They want to sell those other things because that's an opportunity for them, as you heard. The other stores, the food stores, they're gone. And that's their opportunity to do something different with this, uh, business that allows them to sell, you know, not be just another one of the liquor stores up there.
I asked the question earlier, would you be opposed to opening this store without selling alcohol?
We might think about salmon lemon or something. Right now. Because of a lot of money in there. Because we move all the liquor from the old store, from old location to this location. Now we have almost two hundred thousand dollar liquor inside. Can't just say, uh, we can run the liquor in there.
And forgive the almost, um, amount of ignorance in this question. Is, are only, uh, individuals over the age of twenty-one permitted into this, will be permitted into this business like a standard liquor store? Will this will permit, uh, all, all ages of individuals?
All ages are allowed into, into this, any, any store, even a liquor store. Uh, you can't get anywhere, you can't be touching and buying and handling the liquor unless you're twenty-one, but.
Questions or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Two questions. What's your plan for potential loitering in your, on your premises? And then, what, are you open to providing some type of fresh produce or groceries to the community?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're asking one of the questions, sometimes at these stores, people hang out in front, they, they, they loiter?
No, 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 we're not gonna do that.
Well, I know you won't.
No, not, I'm, I'm not gonna permit anybody for, right now at least. Yeah, sorry. I mean, that's what it is, that's what it is.
You ever had a problem like that at your old location?
No.
People loiter out?
No, we don't have no any problems.
Given the busy nature of this road, the, the loitering often occurs in, in lower paced traffic areas, not on a-
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. You only get to speak one time, but you can turn in a comment afterwards. All those in favor? Let the record show seven, those opposed or with concern? Let the record show ten. And that concludes this petition. We thank you for coming. And last item is PC eleven dash twenty-two, Benjamin Delgado.
So you'll see Gretchen clicking the clicker, but you'll actually hear Abby, uh, over the airwaves presenting this petition.
Good evening, everyone. PC eleven dash twenty-three Delgado Brothers is a request for a change in zoning from R two to C eight for a two point three four acre tract northwest side of Brewster Avenue, southeast side of Treston Avenue and southwest side of Van Cleve Avenue. As you can see from the county context map, this site is in the northern portion of mid-county and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. This site is currently vacant. Um, the area to the east is developed primarily with single family development in the R two residence district. And there are a variety of commercial uses developed south of the site across Midland Boulevard. North of the site across Treston Avenue is the campus of a former culinary school, um, which is now the site of the nonprofit Family Forward. And west of the site is a St. Louis County Transportation and Public Works facility in the city of Maryland Heights. And from this larger aerial, you can see some of that residential, commercial and institutional development. This is, um, looking west into the site, standing at the corner of Brewster Avenue and Van Cleve Avenue. Looking northwest along Van Cleve Avenue. Looking northeast at the intersection. Looking east, um, down Van Cleve. And looking west, southwest down Brewster Avenue. And the, the following photos here are all looking northwest into the site. Um, Brewster Avenue is at my back. So we're just moving further, um, south down the site. Still looking northwest. Go ahead, Gretchen. And then this is looking south at the, the neighboring single family residence. And now we've come around to the other side of the site. We're now on Treston Avenue, looking southeast. Um, looking southwest at the, uh, neighboring single family residence. Looking northeast up Treston Avenue. Looking east into the site. And finally, looking northwest across Treston Avenue at the Family Forward site. And now we'll hear, uh, from the petitioner.
Guess my speaker card works for the, so again, my name is Clay Vance with Vance Engineering. Our offices are at one oh five three seven Lackland Road, not too far from this, this site actually. So we're here this evening, um, requesting rezoning from R two to C eight on, uh, two point three four acres of property. Um, let's see. That's not it.
Apologies for the, uh, technical error. Could you speak a little bit closer to the microphone? Just make sure everyone in the room can hear as you're speaking. Thank you.
So, um, again, like, like Abby said, it's in the northwest quadrant of, uh, our northeast quadrant of, of Lindbergh and Midland, um, bounded by Brewster, Treston and Van Cleve. The, uh, current zoning is R two. Site has been, um, I'll run through the slides when I get to them, but I'll just go ahead and keep talking here. Um, the site is, um, vacant, it's been vacant, um, I believe for ten years or th- actually for like thirteen years. I went back through the aerials and it looks like the last house came off of the site somewhere around two thousand and ten. So, um, it has been vacant for thirteen years. We are, um, proposing C eight on the majority of the lots. Let's see if this-
I think she's having some technical difficulty back there. I saw it said there that the, uh, file was corrupted, so I think she's trying to, trying to get that fixed really real fast.
That helps.
They don't like exterior, they don't like external jump drives on the network. This may be a case where you use your paper version and then provide that and we can, and I can send it to the planning commission subsequent to this.
So, um, so the, you know, again, it's, um, the, the properties are vacant, they've been vacant, uh, for thirteen years or so. To the, um, northwest across Treston, the property is owned, uh, C two and C eight. Um, it was formerly culinary school, I believe. It's, um, it's owned by the Children's Home, um, Society of Missouri, I believe, right now. And it's, uh, some kind of a nonprofit family services, um, institutional use. Uh, to the south, along, um, along Old Midland and Midland, there's C two and C eight. Um, then northeast, which is, includes part of this, this current tract, it's, it's owned R two. The proposed C eight includes, um, I believe it's seven tracts. The, the petitioner owns the two southern tracts, one on Treston and one on, uh, Brewster, both. And those have been left out on purpose to give a little bit more buffer to those, um, couple of homes to the south. There's a, um, there's a significant green planting buffer to buffer all sides of this that, um, that, that join the R two district, actually the, that join all, all districts, actually. Um, the, the, the buffer is, um, more significant. They've, they've planted some, they've planted some berms along the right of way out there, but the, but the planting plan that, um, would meet the, meet the county requirements is, is more significant than that with more, um, dense, would include a six foot high site proof fence to back up that planting area. The, um, the access would only be from the Treston side, across from the current C two, two entrance for that, for the parking lot that's over there. Ultimately, they would have a plan for a large building, some significant outdoor storage area. At the, at this point right now, um, they're looking to build about a thousand square foot building and a smaller paved outdoor storage, built outdoor storage area. Um, what we have indicated inside the fencing would be, uh, an additional buffer area that would be for plant storage. Um, to give you, give it s- some more depth between, to the residential side. There, that we've shown some, some possible, um, bin storage that would back up to the fence and that give you some additional buffer. And then pavement would be in there for the, um, equipment and how it's stored materials and that kind of thing. Um, there's a stormwater quality, stormwater detention basin shown inside there at the low point of the site. Um, there is a drainage way that runs through that, that has been determined to be a non-jurisdictional drainage way. So it's, it's something that can be, um, can be modified. The, um, uh, let's see. There's a, here, here's a site with the, with the zoning. I'll just go through these real quick. That's, that's the overall aerial. There is the, there's the existing zoning today. There's what we're requesting that purple C eight there. Again, the site is vacant. Um, it's a significant size. It's, you know, two, almost two and a half acres. This shows the ultimate development and green outline around it would be the, be the planted buffer area. Again, backed up by a, backed up by a, um, site proof fence. This is a more detailed plan that shows the plant storage areas as I indicated, uh, stormwater quality detention basin. Um, that internal area again would be for parking equipment, storing, storing materials that aren't necessarily growing plant materials. But circulation would be in and out off of Treston. This would be a phase one, a reduced plan. You can kind of see that the parking lots cut off in the front and the storage area in the back is smaller. And then we'd, they'd build in a small, smaller portion of the building. At the, during the phase one, all of the buffer planting would be planted, all the fences would be put in, um, et cetera. It's just a site plan. Um, you know, the, the little bit about these guys, they've been in business since two thousand and seven. They've spent quite a while looking for a place to run their operation out of. Now, I, I've, um, I read through the West Overland Community Plan. And, and unfortunately for me, I was involved in the, in the project that precipitated this plan, apparently, the Fitterling Project there. That hasn't gone anywhere, but, um, I read through that study and the study talks about, um, a lot of businesses and quasi-businesses running out of houses and running out of residential properties. And part of the reason for that is because they've started businesses and they've been successful at it. But they're serving the local area and to find a place to go to is difficult. Um, there is not a lot of opportunity. Um, and the, these guys saw this property. They, they actually purchased it. They own the property already. It's, it's vacant residential lots. I would guess that the highest and best use is not to build houses on it, or houses would have been built. I mean, over the last ten years, I've had multiple clients looking for lots and they're looking for lots everywhere. And these lots are still sitting there. So it seems like the highest and best use may not be for, uh, residential homes. We've asked for the C eight because the C eight gives you, the commission and the county, the ability to put conditions on it. Stand, we're in the middle of, um, of residential area, basically. And we certainly would be open to what kind of, uh, to conditions that would, that would, um, be suitable for that. So, um, with that, Ben Delgado is here. He may have want, something that he wants to say, but, um, does he have any specific technical questions for me? I think I've said it all.
I have a question about the streets, uh, from what I've seen here. Are they county streets?
They are.
They are?
Yes. They're, 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 um, non-curbed ditch drain, ditch drainage sw- streets. They don't have curb and gutter and probably not twenty-six feet wide.
Could you give me a summary of the type of trucks and, and trailers equipment that you will be storing there and point out kind of where that might take place? I know it could take place anywhere.
Well, um, well, I, I, Ben may be better to, suited to tell you what they have. I've seen, um, I've seen typical, you know.
Bobcats.
Bob, Bobcats, but, but, um, flatbed trailers, um, with, a- and they, and I think they typically run like one ton trucks. So a little bit bigger than a pickup truck, heavier than a pickup truck, but, um.
Dump trucks.
Uh, I don't know.
All in mulch.
Hi, Mr. Charman and, uh, member of the Planning, Zoning Commission. My name is Ben Delgado and, uh, so I started in business in two thousand and seven. And, uh, we, our business is, is growing and I, I got two brothers. We came to be partners and we employ like ten people. And then, uh, so I got like single axle dump trucks. And I got a pickup trucks and I got flat trailers and then to care, uh, lawn mowers. And I don't have a bob cup yet, but probably I will. Probably have a little dishwasher, little machines. We just looking for a place for, for business.
Maybe I haven't understood correctly, but this is a like landscaping?
It's landscaping, yes, for mowing grass.
Yeah, but, but landscaping defined as grass cutting and, and that type of thing?
Mulch.
Also, uh, you're gonna sell plants or trees or is there any part of that in here?
Uh, probably we will store plants and we like to grow, uh, we like to plant a lot of plants. But it'll be more stored and take it to the jobs, to the customers.
Greenhouses or do you plan to buy those from a nursery and use that as opposed to you stocking that?
Probably buy from the nursery and anything that's left, eventually I will be feeding and keeping in greenhouses.
Right. So there's a potential, potential here for greenhouses to be built?
Yes.
Do you serve commercial or residential or both?
I serve, uh, pl- probably ninety percent of, uh, residential and ten percent of commercial.
And, and do you serve all over Saint Louis or is it mostly in that area?
Mostly in, uh, this area, like, uh, Central Western and Clayton and Ladue, Chesterfield.
And, um, Mr. Vance said that you also own two houses across the street?
Uh, so I, I own a house in twenty-six twenty Treston, the, that we own s- for last six years. And we left one of the big lots planning to probably build a, a home.
And that's so.
What's the current situation right now? In that space right now? Or is it vacant right now or where are you currently operating your business?
I'm operating off my house in twenty-six twenty Treston. And then, um, so I got another house and, uh, near like Oak Avenue, near to your office. And I got another house in Overland. So basically I'm operating out of those three homes.
Right now, this land, is it, is it vacant right now?
It is, it is vacant. We just been cleaning a honeysuckle and we've been planting trees to.
So the green space around the site, that's, that's part of the phase one. That's not there right now.
He has planted some.
Is the, is the vision not to be able to see inside from the outside of the space or out, outside of the premises? Is that like the, that's the goal? So these will be like thick, tall greenery?
Okay. And will you, and will you be, uh, residing at the adjoining parcel at twenty-six twenty Treston? Will that be your residence?
Uh, yes.
I have a question. Um, do you do any type of retaining walls or paver installation or concrete for patios and things of that nature?
Uh, we do very little. The little retaining walls here and there, but nah.
So you wouldn't be storing the blocks or modular blocks or anything for, to take to a job?
Uh, probably, uh, um, here and there, but nah, that is not our main, our main business.
Going back to my original question, what other things you plan for under the, uh, guise of outdoor storage? You're gonna have mulch piles and rock piles and, I mean.
Um, mulch. We do a lot of mulch and we use a lot of topsoil and rock and also we do snow removal. So we, we like to build a nice storage to store our salt. So we can serve our customers, especially on the.
So, so you'd have piles of mulch and everything in the site?
So if you, if you look at the vision is putting some bin storage that falls.
Okay.
Those be concrete?
Exactly, but the companies that I. Yeah.
Anyone, anyone else?
I missed it. Hours of operation.
Uh, usually we start working seven thirty to seven P M. I might be myself into ten, eleven, but most of the crews, they, they, they stop working at six thirty and seven in the summer. And then when it snow, we, uh, operate, uh, almost all night. Depends the conditions of the weather.
About the, about the snow removal business, um, would there be a structure to cover your salt? Cause I don't see one depicted on, I just don't see one depicted on the site development plan.
Probably we'll put a, eventually we would like to build, uh, one day, uh, a barn special for the salt. But for now, probably that'll be in the beginning part.
Cause wouldn't there be a concern about the salt if it got ringed on or whatever and the runoff and if it would hit any of the adjoining property? The, the other thing on getting back to the mulch and all that, do you plan on selling that? Can people come in and buy it and you load them or you just use it for your own use?
No, it'll be for on.
Just trying to determine how much traffic could be going in and out.
Or no clients at all?
Nah.
No customer.
And typical question would be what type of lighting, uh, would you have at night, you know, for night?
That, that's one of the, that's one of the C eight issues. I mean, obviously it's in a sleep, um, to what the, what, what the county suggests because some security. Don't wanna have lights sticking up in the air.
Would this, would this property be gated? Has a fence, but.
Has a gate, you have a, have a gate on the, at, at the building so that, so that the back. You shouldn't honestly, she, with the gates closed, you shouldn't be able to see in there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. At this time, is there anyone representing a group who'd like to speak in favor? Any individual who'd like to speak in favor? In favor?
Hello, I'm Frank Mattingly and I, uh, have a business at eighty-seven, uh, ninety-four twenty-five Lackland Road. We do a lot of, what we do is, uh, embroidery and screen printing. We do a lot of that for fallen first responders, uh, just to name a few was Michael Langsdorf, uh, Tamira Spohannon, Ben Holson was a firefighter. Every time we do a fundraiser for a fallen first responder, Delgados and their crews come and support us. And they support those fallen first responders. As far as what I was listening to here, um, their equipment, their equipment is top notch. It's kept very clean. It's new. It's, it's very presentable when it pulls up in front of a, of, of a resident or a customer. And they give back to the community. They live in Overland. They're wanting to put this building right in the property that's adjacent or in the same vicinity. They're from the area. They work in the area. They belong in the area. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a?
My name is Montserrat Delgado. Uh, I am a student at Southern Illinois, a junior. Um, I have known these men for a very long time. They actually helped me put through college. Like the previous guy had just said, he likes to get, they like to give back to their community, their family. Everyone in particular, I bet you a hundred and fifteen percent, if you ask them for help, they are more than willing to, to you. And I get that there may be worries about like safety, but I don't think they would ever do anything intentionally to like anyone. But like, I guess their intentions are just to expand their company without worrying anybody else.
I have your card.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, any one representing a group who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Do you know any individual who'd like to speak opposition? If you want to speak, just line up and line up and we'll take you one by one.
Good evening, Chairman Hillsiger, Board. Thank you for being here tonight. Member of the community, my name's Tony Baron. Uh, want to address some of the, some of the statements by, uh, the engineering company that drew the plan and by Mr. Delgado. Uh, I think we're going to demonstrate with the group of people that are here tonight that will speak in opposition, that Mr. Delgado has been operating an illegal business, not licensed uh, as a business at the address of twenty-six-twenty Treston Avenue, unincorporated San Luis County, six-three-one-one-four, which is adjacent, right next to the property he wants to develop. Uh, no business license, no retail sales tax, even though as a member of the community, we regularly witness retail sales of, of trees, bushes, plants, bricks, blocks, property, railroad ties, whatever it is they deal in. That, um, they've been bad faith neighbors for five years. Uh, moving in in approximately two thousand seventeen, uh, to a property, uh, previous owned by, uh, Frank Whitmore. House, single-family home. He actually does not live at that property, he lives at a U-S-A-L address. A particular property, uh, that he's mentioned here is basically storage and sales or commercial and residential development of landscaping, construction, uh, and many other types of business. I'm going to go through a real quick list here, but I will say that out of, um, properties that border his property, he does not control five individual residential homes. Uh, four homes and one residential piece of property that's undeveloped. He doesn't own them or control them, but they do.
Mr. Chair, that's two minutes.
Pardon me?
That's two minutes.
Yeah, I'll finish real quick. That he doesn't control these properties. He also doesn't own or control, uh, the two commercially zoned properties to his immediate south. And if he would like to buy those properties, estimated value of about two million dollars, that would make sense. We would all be for this if he wanted to develop a Walmart or Schnucks, he could buy us all out for two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand each. In that subdivision, we could move on and with our lives, but currently that isn't the situation. I will finish with this. Uh, Mr. Delgado, uh, so far has operated a business, uh, outside the realm of all known controls as far as street department, uh, health department, uh, neighborhood preservation. Uh, the, the list goes long and hard, how many tarriffs he's been written up. I think he has five or seven court dates that he didn't show up for. You might want to review that and I yield my time to the next person. I would like to vote no on this project, but I think by the time we get to the end of the other people's statements, it'll be very clear that Mr. Delgado is, uh, welcome to start a business and run a commercial industrial endeavor. But that really needs to be in a commercial or industrial yard all over, uh, around the airport area. He could rent or buy plenty of industrial lots up there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you a homeowner or a business owner? Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Cass and I live on Brewster Avenue, the white house you saw on the southwest picture of the street. I, uh, certainly have been, I moved there about a year and a half ago. First home, looking for a nice quiet area and I found one here in this, uh, this nice area. And even though they would have a high fence and high trees, there would still be a lot of noise and potential lights coming from here. That'd be very disruptive to myself and to our neighbors around, and so I vote in opposition of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Kelly Oben. Um, thank you for the time. I was just coming in to speak briefly because while they do seem like amazing.
Did you see your residents and we know where you are in relationship?
Partial honor of twenty-seven fifteen Browster.
Okay.
Oh, they do seem like amazing people and I genuinely feel for them, having watched them come up and speak. It's not about them, it's about the neighborhood in whole. And while there is taking great care and preventing the sightline, there's still noise pollution, smell pollution, because landscaping business does maintain fertilizer, other things, including concerns or the fertilizer, which does cause agricultural runoff or organic waste runoff, which in that sort of storage pond will encourage the production or reproduce, reproduction of the Kool-Aid genus of mosquitoes, which do spread west mile, which we didn't normally have to worry about in the last two years. St. Louis has seen two cases, it is something we need to be sure, pay attention to. And it does have a radius about two point, or point two-five to one full mile, which would cover the entirety of that neighborhood. Um, there's also concerns about, uh, outdoor cats getting into things. People that I've talked to have said that they've discussed maintaining their vehicles on there. So there's potential for fertilizer, uh, antifreeze runoff, which outdoor cats could get into because they have defense to and other things, uh, along those nature. It's, I know previous people have taken up a lot of time, so I will go ahead and see the rest of my time. Primary concern is just the noise and environmental health.
Got your comments.
Yes, my name is Keith Hurtel and I'm both a business owner and a homeowner. I own two properties in that small neighborhood. Uh, the one property I bought thirty-seven years ago, I lived there for twenty-two years. I also own, uh, own another home across the street from there. I own one on, uh, Van Cleve and I want to own a home on Brewster. They're both leased properties right now, that's where my business comes in. And, uh, they're both directly across the street from this proposed project, so it directly affects me. It's kind of interesting to see both of my homes in this presentation here. So, uh, the thing that I'm concerned about is I've always followed the rules. I've done your inspections, I've got permits, I've done all the occupancy codes. Uh, matter of fact, I was in this very room just recently, about two or three years ago, to do about a thirty-five thousand dollar renovation on the Van Cleve home that was seen in the presentation. I was here to get all the proper permits. Now, the first guy I had mentioned, this guy, if you saw in the presentation, he's already got his trees planted around the property. And believe it or not, they have tags on them, he's selling them. This guy's been operating this business since he moved, since he moved in there in, you know, in two thousand seventeen, he said. Last, every time I've been over there, I've seen people going in and out of that house. I don't know if they live there or if he's operating a business. It's not my, you know, it's, that's for you guys to decide. But, uh, that's my main concern and also my property value is going down with his eyesore going in right across the street from me. And the other thing about it is I feel I, I, I offer a valuable, uh, something valuable to the community, some affordable housing. We definitely need more of that. I don't think we need another nursery, if that's what he's proposing. You go a mile down the street, there's a Menards, there's a Home Depot. You go a mile and a half down the other, there's another Home Depot. I don't see that the community really needs to have a nursery, if that's what he's indeed proposing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Um, hello, uh, my name is Luis La Boy. Uh, I'm residential and I'm addressing two issues here. Uh, one of them will be like pedestrian issues. Uh, there's no sidewalks through the neighbor, so whoever has to walk the, the dog or, you know, his pet has to go in the street, uh, directly. And this is an area that is surrounded by houses, so it will be like a safety issue. Uh, currently people walk in the street, like I said, uh, there's no crosswalk at all in, in the four intersections surrounding the property. And the second issue will be, uh, water and drainage issue. It's filled in the Browster Avenue creek behind the property on Treston with wood chips, leaves, logs, dump dirt over the top. Um, since, you know, he's been operating, um, illegally. Um, this can cause flooding and it can block, uh, it can block the, you know, the, the water and it can possibly cause flooding to, uh, multiple properties in the area. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Elieza McCona, I live in the, in the home. More traffic, the means more criminal for the neighborhood and possibly included, but no limited to pretty dense home. Burglaries and up to them.
Good evening, my name is Samuel Hernandez, I'm one of the, uh, homeowner around that area. And I have few concerns. Uh, first of all, our, uh, road is not built for commercial, it's narrow. There's no sidewalk. And the rainwater goes downhill. And during their operation, I would say in the morning, when they go in and out or in the afternoon, in the evening, when the busiest day, when the busiest morning, during the time when the kids will be picked up by their school bus and they will be like probably crossing the street beside the children. And as again, I, I was saying that there's no walkway or something. The kids cannot go back, cannot move back because it's like a trench or something going downhill. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, my name is Casey Adams, uh, this is my husband, David Adams. Um, and between the both of us and my father, who couldn't be here tonight, we own four properties, uh, in the immediate area, one of which is located on Brewster. Um, I have lived in the area since I was born, so thirty-eight years. I've watched what, um, the planning and zoning of the commercial went from being a trailer park where the now family forward is planned, um, or well, I mean, is that to, um, being completely obliterated by the nightlights. I actually took a picture the other night of the already, I don't know if anybody can see this really, but this is what I see from my bedroom window. I can see Mr. Delgado's, um, lot from my bedroom window. And I already feel, um, a little trapped by the idea of him producing more noise, more, um, I actually with his lot not being developed, have a buffer between Lindberg and Dorset. Um, as other people have stated, um, he's already operating as a full-scale landscaping business with his trucks, trailers, equipment, they're loud all day, all hours of the night and day. Um, I don't sleep well, so I get up, you know, four, five, six, seven in the morning, uh, and I hear it. Um, Brewster is already a busy residential street with cars and Van Cleve is well, as well. Um, I'm worried about property values, I'm worried about noise and light pollution. Um, Mr. Delgado, um, may or may not be aware, but there is another property that's already zoned, uh, commercial at the corner of, um, Ruckert and Page, uh, area. It's been for sale for years, it's, um, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the fence and the buffer that they are trying to provide is not high enough. Um, he's already stated that his services aren't actually used in this area. He's going out to, you know, Chesterfield and the like. Um, so the area does not have the means to support his business. Um, twenty-seven-twenty Treston is listed as an office building on his plans from what I understood. Um, but he stated he's living there. He, uh, in the past, I've known him to rent that property out. So, um, it is not being what he is proposing today. Um, or where him, him living, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, that's two minutes.
Uh, mulch, salt rock, you know, the poisoning of the air, um, hours of operation. Um, it's great that he supports the firefighters, but at the end of the day, it does not support, um, the immediate.
And I just want to say that, uh, I walk around the block with my kids and my kids do walk around with dogs and, uh, or we ride bikes and there's no sidewalks. So him coming through with trailers and big, you know, trucks, um, kind of poses a problem.
I would, I would be happy and welcome him to build residential property. If he's going to put that amount of money into building a commercial, he can develop those, um, four and five pieces of property into residential.
Hello, my name is Sue Ann Nichols and I am a resident on Browster. And Mr. Delgado has been operating since two thousand and seventeen as a business. He's also been doing retail sales, having people come in and actually purchase things. Uh, he even had a dispute with somebody. Um, it concerns me because we do have kids that live in the neighborhood, the safety, the crime. We don't need the crime, we're a quiet little neighborhood. We would definitely approve of him building residential, doing a park. He's harmed already lots of animals, the, the nature. The roads can't handle the big trucks that have been coming in and out. He's been blocking traffic, he's knocked down signs. We have, um, right at Browster and Van Cleve, there's only a two-way stop, even though it's a four-way. So there's lots of traffic going back and forth anyway already from the residents. So what, and he doesn't even live at the property? And he doesn't have any permits, he hasn't paid taxes, what, what, what's going to happen with the taxes? He's not paying. I mean, where is it going? For the retail sales that he's doing? It's not going back into the community because it, he's not paying it. And we know this because we've contacted the tax assessor's office and as of today, they said that there is no business tax being paid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Board. I'm Cody Breedall, I live at, um, resident at eleven-three-three-seven Van Cleve Avenue. Uh, my grandparents, uh, have lived there, I'd be the third generation. Um, for, they've lived there for, I'd be bold enough to say sixty-plus years. And, uh, I thank you all for being here tonight. I thank my neighbors and I thank the Delgado brothers for being here as well. Um, I just want to say I see multiple families, uh, little children, uh, riding on bikes and, um, just dog walkers constantly. I myself own a dog who I like to walk her consistently. Um, so my biggest concerns would just be for the neighbors, um, as well as the road maintenance. Um, topics that have already been discussed. And, uh, lastly, I just want to just come up here and offer them a counterproposal of possibly just, uh, continuing endeavors and seeking other industrial parks, uh, for this business. I encourage them, uh, to, uh, continue to pursue their business and, uh, thank you all again. And I just didn't want to leave this, uh, board meeting on any bed of strife, but on a bed of encouragement. So I appreciate you all, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Wanda Lancaster and I live on Van Cleve Avenue. I actually live at Van Cleve and Treston. I look out my front porch, my front living room, and I go down Treston. Um, there is a lot of traffic, big traffic trucks right now, which kind of concerns me. I don't have any small children, but I do have grandchildren. Um, my other concern is, I understand he is running his business down there, but, um, prime example, fire in St. Louis County, you're not supposed to have a fire unless you have it in a pit. Uh, it's been a while, but my husband and I looked out and I was like, oh my God, there's a fire down there, like a house is on fire. I mean, the fire was so high, I actually got in my car and drove around the block to find out what's going on here. I mean, we're in St. Louis County, we're not out in the woods. And they were having a fire and I, and I'm telling you, this fire was higher than houses, which they were all standing around, I guess it was controlled, but I have a problem with that because I live in St. Louis County. I go by all the rules, anything as far as building onto my house, I've gotten permits, I'm trying to do a two-car garage. I like that area, everybody here is, we're like a little, little area and it's not a real high industrial. And it's not a real high industrial or homes that, you know, everybody wants to flock to, as they were saying. All those lots were undeveloped, but the people that still live there, we, we care about it. And we try to keep our properties as a residential property. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close this portion? Tish, you want to come back up?
So, no wait. There, there are some, some items that I obviously can't address. But what I can address is the, you know, the, the traffic, again, traffic and storm water, those kind of things. All that, all that can be addressed with, through your limits with the C8. Lighting too. The, the, I, I don't know what the primary access that they use today is. My suggestion would be to limit the access in from Midland up to Trist, Midland Old, Midland to Triston, and not allow any commercial access out Van Cleve. That would, that would take care of most all of the concerns about the, about driving through the neighborhood. That's hard to enforce, I understand that. But that would be, that would be something that could probably be limited by the ordinance. And then with regard to some of the other things, the lighting and a lot of those things, that, that, that can be addressed with requirements on the plan. And then the, the smell and noise and that kind of thing, those are all ordinance-regulated items for general commercial, general use. So I don't really have anything to add. Ben may, may have something that he would.
So it's true, I've been doing everything what I can to support my business. So it's, it's true that I don't have a tax exam because I pay my taxes when I purchase the materials and I have to store in my place. Because I do, my CPA is like serviced, I do. I don't have a retail store. So I'm not allowed to sell anything. So as one of the problems that I would like to resolve and kind of go more like a real business. In, in the last two weeks, I see neighbors take pictures all over. St. Louis County inspectors came almost every day about drainage and I show and explain all the situation. It is, those lots are vacant and it's, and it's, it's just, it's a lot of trash, a lot of junk up, up there. So we just, we've been explaining all the sewer, the water. And eventually we would like to fix all that. So I have to say, thank you.
Questions, anybody?
Do you currently park any vehicles on the street outside of this proposed area? Currently, right now?
I park inside my lots and my home.
And, and do you, just so I'm clear, you don't sell any items from that lot to the general public?
No. No, I mean, I go to Home Depot, buy my stuff and keep it there for next day or next week. But nah. I got a lot of family, a lot of friends. And in and out.
I'm looking at the detention basin. Somebody talking about mosquitoes.
It wouldn't, that would be a dry.
Dry one, I mean, it's showing it's not dry.
But it's, it's just for, it's just a color. It, it's not, it's not an overthought. It's just, it's just a different color to depict it. I mean, water's blue, detention basin blue. So no, it's not, it's not intended to be a wet basin.
Well, if it does become wet, would you be willing to put an air raider?
Well, I guess so, but I don't see, there, there's not a.
Not enough.
There's not a, there's not a way to actually make a, a wet basin effective for storm water management in this case.
Thank you.
It would be, it would be a detention basin rain garden type of thing. With all the water and all that would be controlled by MSD.
One of the comments that I heard was something about vehicle repair. Would there be any vehicle repair at the site?
I mean, eventually would be a little things like flat tires, probably little emergencies like lights. But not really, we're not mechanics.
Is this on your particular vehicles that you're working on or?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, keep them up a minute.
Five in the back, three in the front.
Let the record show eight. Those opposed are with concerns. Let the record show 29. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.
Then I'll switch the presentation back for the executives.
Yeah, we'll take about a five-minute break. Executive session.
This is basically the Abby show here at the executive session. I've just realized.
Although the, the two letters for approval we can do, we can give.
Yeah, do you want me to go up to the podium or I could?
Go to the podium.
Well, just be a lesson, if anybody gets sick, you still have to.
It was Abby's choice.
If Mr. Taylor can do it.
It's pretty, it's pretty tough, isn't it?
He can do it, Abby can do it.
The benefits of work from home, now you can work sick.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, Abby, Abby's a little sick, but she's doing it. I'm ready, if you are.
All right, go ahead and take a roll.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Lawler.
Here.
Mr. Bedell.
Here.
Mr. Sneed.
Here.
Mr. Hilsinger.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
And Ms. Hart.
We got eight. Okay, we'll go to meeting summaries. We need a motion there. I don't have it.
I actually don't think we have it. I don't think we put any minutes on the, on this session. So we just have.
All business letters for approval?
So both of these letters, the first 06 and 0723 is the letter of recommendation for approval for the rezoning from C8 to R6AA and a PEU for the site on Smizer Station Road, consistent with the commission's recommendation of approval from the sixth. Similarly, PC40, and that's actually 4022, is the text amendment regarding car wash, vehicle wash facilities, which is also consistent with the commission's recommendation of approval from, from March the sixth.
Okay, we need a motion. We can dig them together. We need a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Are you not all those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. We going to correspondence?
We can't hear Abby, Mel.
Mel, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to do the?
I'll call out, yes.
Okay. So first correspondence item is PC41-80, St. Andrews Credit Union, which is a C8-planned commercial district governing 1.3 acres on the northeast corner of LeMay Ferry Road and Dumont Place. As you recall, the commission voted to recommend approval of their request to amend several of the conditions of development in association with a proposed redesign of the site. And the commission voted to recommend approval at their meeting in February. Councilman Tracus has, has referred the item back to the commission for further consideration of architectural review. So as you recall, the site is in South County and here's the preliminary plan that they had submitted. And so in response to Councilman Tracus's order, the petitioner submitted some additional architectural elevations showing the exact, giving an idea of the proposed percentages of materials to be used on each facade of the building, including the amount of fenestration and the colors proposed. So the commission, I'm sorry, the department is recommending approval of adding architectural review to the ordinance. We have prepared a revised recommendation including conditions based on the preliminary elevations submitted. These conditions include requiring a mix of high-quality materials and a high degree of fenestration and utilizing the medium and light earth tones that they have shown. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
We need a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I, I just need a little more clarification in what we approved compared to what being asked to approve.
So basically because of the age of this ordinance, when it was originally adopted, it was, it didn't have an architectural review component and we didn't add one in. The, the department didn't draft architectural review conditions when we brought this to you in February. But then when it went to the council, the councilman wanted there to be an architectural review component. So that's why it was sent back.
So.
So this is the typical, sorry, this is the typical sort of architectural review we would write for a C8, it just wasn't there yet.
Right. But I thought it was, but I didn't know what we're looking at here.
They are the same. But now we have the percentages of the fenestration. Yes. And the exact details of the materials, right. So they are the same. There are no changes, just more, more details.
Yes.
And we'll see it again on site.
So, right, then, then if the ordinance amendment goes through council, then they would need to submit a site development plan, which the department would review. We would review the architectural elevations and then we would bring both back to you at an executive meeting after, after that.
Do we have a motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Next is PC128-87, Southside National Bank.
PC127, I'm sorry, PC128-87, Southside National Bank is a C8-planned commercial district governing 0.9 acres on the southwest side of Kennerly Road and southeast of Tesson Ferry Road. This is a request to amend the permitted uses to include a medical office. So this site is also in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. The planning department is recommending approval of this request. We find that medical offices are compatible with the existing permitted uses and surrounded uses in the area. The petitioner indicated in their letter that the exact proposed use is a medical clinic, which will include diagnostic labs, imaging, and a pharmacy on site. The petitioner also noted that a periodontist office has operated at the site since the late 1980s. So including the, expanding the permitted uses to include a medical office would bring that existing periodontist office into. would bring that, um, existing periodontist office into conformity. And then, uh, the department also notes that the amount of the building that can be used for medical offices will be limited by the existing parking at the site. There's currently forty-one spaces at the site, and, um, it, it can accommodate, uh, this proposed medical office here currently. But how much more of the building could be used for medical offices would deter, be determined by, um, the parking. So at this time, I'd like to request a motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Question? Seeing none of all those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Hope this is ready for action, PC oh three dash twenty-three.
PC oh three dash twenty-three, Dharma Sharma is a request for a conditional use permit in the C two shopping district for a point four one acre tract on the northwest quadrant of Telegraph Road and West Pottle Avenue. As you recall from public hearing, this site is in South County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this aerial, you can see some of the surrounding commercial development on Telegraph Road and the residential development accessed by Fordor Road and West Pottle Avenue. This is the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. Um, it shows one curb cut on Telegraph Road and one curb cut on West Pottle Avenue. Um, the thirty-nine hundred square foot building, which is located near the street with the parking in the rear, um, a total of thirteen parking spaces. Um, and the landscaping proposed is, uh, shrubs around the building foundation and trees around the western portion of the tract. Subsequent to public hearing and concerns about accessing the site from Telegraph Road, um, the petitioner submitted a revised preliminary site development plan that shows right out only egress onto Telegraph Road. They also relocated the trash enclosure to the northwest corner of the site, stating that they found this location would be, um, easier for the trash truck to service. Um, and moving the, uh, trash enclosure allowed them to add some additional parking spaces. Uh, the department is recommending some site plan revisions, um, including landscape islands at the terminus of each parking row. Um, and an alternative landscape plan will need to be submitted showing shrubs and native grasses surrounding the building foundation in lieu of traditional buffer yards. Um, and the department would require all of the new planting to be Missouri native. A front yard setback variance would be required for the building to be in this location. And the department is recommending that no window signs or temporary parking lot signage, including flags, banners, and inflatables be permitted at the site. Excuse me, uh, so the department is recommending approval of this request. We find that the conditional use permit procedure is the appropriate mechanism for developing the proposed use and that the request meets the criteria of the conditional use permit procedure as laid out in the zoning ordinance. Um, the proposed package liquor store has been operating in the, um, retail center north of the site since twenty thirteen without a conditional use permit, and the department finds that the proposed redevelopment shows a significant improvement to the site, um, which we find that, uh, desired and valuable in this area. And we're recommending the following specific conditions of development. Uh, one, that the curb cut on Telegraph Road shall be limited to right out only. Um, an alternate landscape plan shall be submitted for the landscaping surrounding the building. A front yard setback variance will be required, an architectural review will be required. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Make a motion for denial.
We have a second? We have a second?
Second.
I'd like to give at least some.
Go ahead, Bill.
Points of why I've made that motion. This development, looking at it from a planning, as, uh, as, and this proposal is just too large for the site. Uh, it borders the very curb, essentially, Pottle Road and part of Telegraph. I think that that, that location, uh, creates several concerns. One, I just mentioned the setback distances are showing, uh, limits the site distance, uh, for drivers, whether they're pulling in to the, um, uh, parking lot, pulling out of the parking lot, or even just going down Pottle Road and making a right-hand turn onto Telegraph. This building's gonna block a lot of vision there. And, uh, secondly, I think just visually, seeing the back of this building, that close to the street, is just not consistent with good planning or design. Those are primarily the reasons I don't think that we ought to approve this plan as it's been proposed.
Question regarding this vote, this, the vote that we're doing now doesn't approve a setback variance, correct? This is just for the use?
That is correct, so the, the variance, oh, pardon me. Yes, so if this, if this were to, if the conditional use permit were to be granted by this commission, um, because of what they're showing, they would be required to go to the border zoning adjustment to get that design relief. There's no guarantee, the border zoning adjustment is not a, is not a rubber stamp. What you are doing is you are considering the use, um, as a, as a condition to use a liquor store in, in the zoning ordinance, as well as, um, then considering any additional, um, conditions that would be a part of that permit that would make this, make this permit, um, you know, appropriate, um, as this commission finds fit.
Recommend we approve it with the questions that you.
So staff is recommending approval, however, um, we, the commission has the ability to make a decision con, contrary to staff, and we would rewrite this report, um, however, uh, the, the commission finds appropriate.
But then as a larger sort of answer to your question, I think maybe Paula, at, you know, granting or recommending approval of the change is never approval of the site plan, only when we bring a site plan back and, and show it to you in that conference room is, is the commission actually approving, um, plans. So, like Jacob was saying, if the CUP was, was granted, then they would submit a site plan to us to review as a department, and then, you know, depending on, on what the conditions were, something would come back to the commission for approval, but they would still have to go through some other steps.
So at this point, should we discuss the use, the, the request is the conditional use of the site?
It's the use in, in the site design as, as well.
Yeah, you can, yes, absolutely, as part of a, a CUP procedure, it is, uh, within the commission's purview to discuss site design as long as it meets those four prongs of the CUP test. It's within good planning practice, it's desirable for the community.
Not a detriment, and then visually.
And visually compatible, so there are, so as long as the, the rationale fits within those, um, within that sort of large framework, the commission has some latitude.
And if the commission approves it as it is, they can always come back, change some of those.
Come back with modifications?
Yes. Yeah. So they could come back for a, they could resubmit, uh, if, if it was a full denial, and it went, and it went completely through, um, they could not request the same request for twelve months, um, but they could subsequent to that.
Option, if I may, would be to put it on hold, present to them our concerns, and that doesn't deny it. Sit on hold, have them respond to the concerns that I think I spoke of before, and then they can decide whether or not to make a change or not. For a hold?
Do we have a motion on the floor, then? Hold, further comment?
So I want to make sure that staff is clear about the request to go back, so we will go back to the petitioner. Where we will discuss the commission's concerns as it pertains to the siting of the building is, is that the pri, the primary concern or one of the main concerns is, is perhaps some redesigning the site to, to move that structure. So, and, and what you will find is that they will, we will then ask for them to, um, respond to us in writing, provide, provide a letter for the commission's consumption, present that letter, uh, at a subsequent meeting after they have delivered that. Sometimes they will, um, come back and they will redesign it, and other times they will say, um, you know, this, this is why we designed it this way for X, Y, and Z reasons, but that's for them to make that determination.
We could have asked him this evening, in opposition liquor store, oh, he was one of them? Was just for your information.
I'm saying we're talking about what A one two provides them is one of the development, um, would be no window signs or temporary parking lot.
Temporary parking lot?
Sure, I understand what that.
So when we, we put that condition in, and that is because what you frequently find at, at liquor stores, convenience stores, whatnot, is that they will place paper signage in their windows, and frequently they will, it'll almost be completely covered.
They have spec, like special, special pricing.
Sure, sure.
About temporary.
So when, and so when we, um, and I think, and before I get to the temporary parking lots, I think also one of the conditions was no, um, brand lights around the windows, because you sometimes see that they use those as a, uh, attractive, yes, an attraction grabbing implement. So a temporary parking lot sign is gonna be those kinds of things that if you, you know, when you drive past a site and they have one of those like balloon men that's like up, or pennants, or those like sale signs.
Right, sale signs that get wrapped around posts.
Right.
That's what that.
Yeah, so that would be, uh, because they did not request it, in fact, they actively stated they were not gonna have any permanent pole signage, the only signage was going to be wall signage on the building. We're also recommending to, you know, our concern through this whole process was to ensure that the site was attractive. And that it, um, which is always a concern for all development. So, um, and just knowing that the general use, we wanted to make sure that, um, the commission, you know, if it was the will of the commission to grant this, use their discretion to really limit that so that, you know, the site doesn't get over, doesn't have too many of those kinds of things on.
And the zoning ordinance already limits window, signs in the window to, you know, less than fifty percent, but we, we are recommending that no window signage be.
If I remember, uh, uh, when we talked about this before, all the facade that is facing the road is, doesn't have any windows.
Is there, the, are the preliminary architectural elevations in here, Mel?
Yeah.
Because they, they, they provided them.
So are we gonna, if it's approved, allow them to put signage on that facade?
So they would, uh, as the standard sign ordinance in our zoning ordinance would give them, um, a wall sign there on their, along their front, if they're on.
Like the name of the store?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm talking about the same kind of signs you put, you know, Michelob light on special.
Right.
They gonna plaster that on there?
And that's why we actively said no, none of those, that those would not be permitted whatsoever. It's one of the conditions. Right, so right. I, I see what you mean, because you're, because you're concerned not only might they do it just in windows, they might actually do it on the facade of the structure, I see.
Well, yeah, because that's what all the traffic's gonna see. The traffic won't see the windows that they have in the front.
So Mel, looking at this, looking at these two facades, which of these is facing Telegraph Road?
Actually, I didn't open the one where I think they relabeled them, Abby, um, you know, I, this one that says rear is the longest side that, that is, uh, interior.
So that faces the parking lot?
Yes, this one, that this bottom one faces the parking lot.
So then I'm, is this top one is what is facing telegra, and it's because it's a, it's a weird, right, it's a weird bend, but this is what's facing Telegraph and Pottle, is this top one?
Well, just Telegraph.
Somewhere the building corner is, is there as well.
The, the other side, I don't think has any windows in it.
There's one side that has no windows.
Yeah, and I think this is.
Faces Pottle and Telegraph.
I think this one.
If you're looking at it.
I think this southern one actually faces, I, I think like if you're coming along Pottle, you see this along the side, but I think this, I don't think this is visible, like I don't think this is just actively facing this, this bottom one is, is facing Telegraph. Although what I will say is one of the conditions that the commission could always state is that all facades must have a certain amount of fenestration, if it's your, if it's your desire. To say every facade must include a certain percentage of fenestration, um, and then they would be, it would be incumbent upon them to, uh, make revisions to their, to their building plan to, to meet that. But that's for, that's for the commission to determine.
We're not doing a site plan, but this would be done or something, and what would all that?
I, my, I'm gonna venture guess, they probably think of this as like ethos or some sort of.
Okay, as opposed to window.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is what they're showing now, right.
I have a question. Should Bill and I rescind our motion? Since he made a motion to hold and got a second, should we rescind the previous motion that was to deny this?
Yeah.
I think, uh.
He's saying.
No, he made a motion to deny it, I seconded it, and then we never did go back and change that. He come along and made a motion.
I thought Keith did, but that's.
I didn't hear that.
Okay. In your motion?
I do.
And Bill, you rescind yours?
Rescind it to deny.
Let's, let's make the motion, put it on, on hold then.
Well, that's what I thought we just did, matter who seconded it, I think.
Yeah, you, yeah.
Put a hold on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I.
I just thought we had competing motions there.
Okay.
No, no, that, great for bringing it up, but I think we're all right.
I have it, Mr. Sneed moved to hold and Mr. Taylor was the second, because I'd missed you saying that, Mr. Elliott. I missed you seconding that first one.
So it's ready for a hold?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else to add? Seeing none of all those in favor of a hold?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero.
That is it for tonight, uh, the next meeting will be on April the tenth, an executive meeting that is virtual only. Um, the only thing to decide is whether the commission wants to meet at four or six. And I know, you know, working folks, so, um, I know four PM during the workday, but we just need to decide the time, and I could send a poll, um, if that would be convenient. But that's it.
Do we have, we need a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it eight zero.
On the internet.
Long night.